Okay.
Shall we begin?
Go for it.
All right. It being six o'clock, I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for January 3rd, 2024. And a happy new year to all assembled. Sherri, could we have roll call, please?
Chair Quelisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy hasn't arrived yet and one vacancy.
And one vacancy. Oh, that was another question I wanted to ask. Any news on the vacancy? Oh, for the, for the end, yes, sure, okay. All right, if you'll all follow me with the pledge of allegiance, please. Ready, begin. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Any suggestions on changes to the agenda, Lucas?
Uh, no changes.
Okay, then we'll leave it as it stands. Next up is Public Communications, the time set aside to discuss items of city business that are not on the agenda. Do, I don't have any. Oh, this is Public Communications, okay. I have one card, Larry Steingold, please come forward.
Good evening and happy new year.
Happy new year to you, sir.
I just have one question. Has the city received any communications regarding the land across from Norroth? And what's going on?
Are you talking about-
Who or anybody employed by the city or representing the city received any communication?
You're talking about the 14 acres across the street?
Yes, specifically.
Um, there is an application in.
For how many?
For development.
For how many units?
Uh, I want to say it's north of 2,600 units.
North of 2,600?
Yes.
Okay.
Whoa. A bunch of eight-story towers? No.
Yeah.
I, I remember when that property came before the planning commission, once before.
I know, but let's just, we can't get into the details on some of that on the agenda.
All right, all right. Wasn't anything like that. Okay, anyone else here present who wishes to speak during public communications? Sherri, anyone out there in La La Land?
No.
Okay. Then we'll move on to, oh, we've missed it. Oh, no, it's, it's after consent, after consent item, okay. Very good. The consent item is the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, December 6th. And recommendation approved is submitted, but any changes suggested?
I don't have any.
No.
Okay. Then a motion for approval would be in order.
So moved.
All right, I, I second.
Okay, motion by Bennett and second by Trent. Any discussion? Sherri, let's take a roll call on item one, please.
Bennett? Bennett?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Quelisi.
Yes. All right, disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts.
Uh, familiar with the site, no ex parte contacts.
Also familiar with the site and no ex parte.
I drove by it today, nice looking fence, I guess, or wall or whatever. No ex parte contacts. All right, let's go to the public hearing item then. Maura?
Thank you Chair Quelisi and hello commissioners. On, on November 17th, 2023, the applicant submitted two applications requesting approval of discretionary permits to legalize an iron gate and stone pillars that were installed without benefit of permit that exceed the maximum allowable fence height within the front yard setback area of an existing single-family residence. Section 10 to 804 of the Ojai Municipal Code defines the front yard setback area for fences as being measured from the front property line to the front wall of the primary structure. The gate and the pilasters are set back from the front property line approximately 28 feet and the single-family residence is set back well beyond that. Uh, section 10 to 805 of the code allows a maximum fence height within, within this area to be four feet and the gate and pilasters, uh, being reviewed tonight reach, they're of different heights, but they reach up to, um, eight feet in height. And so the applicant is requesting approval to legalize the gate and pilasters from the allowable four feet to the existing eight. The site is approximately 2.78 acres and it's developed with an approximately 3,400 square foot single-story, single-family residence in the RO4 zone. The applicant has indicated that the gate was installed for security purposes. The application includes that there is concern in the Persimmon Hill HOA regarding security due to some recent break-in incidents. The justification from the applicant includes that the police chief provided the residents with a presentation regarding security and noted that gates are a means of, or a deterrent and good for security purposes. Your staff report includes that the presentation by the police, it, it sounds like it's, the staff report kind of says that the police report prompted the installation of the gate when in fact the gate was installed first and the installation was validated as a means of security afterwards. So I want to make sure that I correct that because I think your staff report may indicate otherwise.
Was unclear, yeah.
Right. The residence is somewhat isolated as it is set back and up from the road and includes a curving driveway and is not visible from the public right of way. So kind of hence a security, potential security issue. The gate is set back approximately 28 feet from the front property line and is situated perpendicular to the street on this curving driveway. Whether or not the gate is visible from the public right of way is not a finding within the Ojai Municipal Code to support a variance. However, as shown in the photos, the gate is not prominently displayed at the street. But that, but that is not a reason for, to support a variance. Section 10 to 2003 of the code is that for, uh, so, um, the requirement for a design review permit and that requirement is for all applications for construction of any structure that requires a variance. If it weren't for this variance requirement for this particular project, design review would not be required for construction of a fence or the pilasters, um, in the RO4 zone. A variance is required when a proposed project has specific features which are outside of the boundaries of the zone district's development standards. A variance is a request for relief from those development standards to alleviate an unusual hardship to a particular property. If granted, the variance permits the owner to, to use the land in a manner not otherwise permitted. So it's an exception, um, to the, to the rules. The applicant is requesting a variance to the maximum allowable height from four to eight feet as previously stated. It's in the, it's in the front setback area. The gate, um, provides security as a security element for the residence. And additionally, the iron gate that is going across the driveway, it's a sliding gate and it's a wrought iron gate and it's not a solid screen. It's, um,
Pickets.
Thank you, pickets. So with that, as it says in your staff report, staff is, is recommending approval. And we do have the property owner, I believe, online and we have an applicant here also.
Okay, questions for staff?
Um, go ahead.
Go, you go. I was just gonna say not at this time, but can we get questions after we hear from the applicant?
Sure.
Was the, was the rolling gate installed at the time of the, uh, development of the tract? Or was it, was it built?
The applicant believes that, that the fence was installed in November of 2023, so no, that would not be at the time the tract was established. Okay, I thought I wrote that it was 23, um, no, um, August.
So this, this gate was installed by a prior owner?
You're right, 23 of November 23?
Yeah, so, just to get some context to the situation here. This fence and gate were installed after, um, the, the fences, walls and hedges ordinance went forward.
That's 2004, I think.
No, 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 that, the 2004 piece is the standards. And then in 2021, there was provisions that identified requirements for permitting and then clarified some of the height restrictions and requirements that, um, exist and we enforce today. After that had taken place, now, anything before that, any fences or gates or walls that have been installed within Persimmon Hill or even within the city of Ojai were considered to be, that were outside the boundaries of the requirements were considered to be non-conforming. Here-
Legal non-conforming.
Legal non-conforming. Here, what we have is an example of a fence that was, that was built and then someone had complained and we went out and verified and then found that that fence, after having that conversation with the, and it's a difference of two different, um, contractors that had worked on it. Mr. Mellett, who is identified here, was not the original, um, company or contractor that had worked on this fence. It was somebody previous that staff had met with. And they've since retired, so now it's Mr. Mellett that's, that's, um, wrapping this up with the, with the homeowner. So that's just a little bit of context and history that's outside of really what, even what the staff reports identified. It's a little bit deeper dive.
Okay. John, you had no questions at the moment then?
No, I wanted to hear from the applicant first, that's okay.
Very good. Then we'll move to the applicant. Is the applicant here? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening, I'm Bill Mellett, I'm a landscape architect and the applicant for, uh, Mr. Adamo.
Representative of the parcel owner.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
He contacted me, I guess he had gotten a notice that he was in violation with this gate and fence installation without a permit and he was going to require a variance to allow the gate to remain. So I've been working with the applic-, with the homeowner in the city to, uh, try and resolve the issue. I think really everything's been stated, the gates, it's a beautiful gate. It was installed without a permit per the new code in 2022, I believe you said, or 2021. Yeah. And, um, it's set back 28, 29 feet from the street. The highest point of the gate is eight feet. It drops down to about six, eight at the lowest for the gate and the walls are shorter than that, um, approximately four feet tall. If you have any questions?
The, so was this, was this gate and pilasters and wall? Cause there's a lot of wall there too.
Yes.
Was that all done at one time? Or you may not know?
I don't, I think it was done at, at one time, it was a drawn-out process, but yes, as one installation.
Was it, was it done under contract from the current owner or a prior owner of the property?
I believe the current owner.
The current owner, okay. Yeah, all right.
I think he was unaware of the fact that a permit was required.
Yeah, it was, it was done under a previous landscape architect.
Yes.
And designer, that, that, he, that company ended up, the owner ended up retiring. So then, uh, Mr. Mellett ended up taking over, um, the process. So Mr. Mellett actually didn't build the fence and gate.
Right.
Um, it was, it was a previous landscape architect.
Okay. You personally are aware of the requirement for a permit to build something like this?
Yes, I am.
I thought so, yeah. Familiar face here at the Planning Commission. Any other questions for the applicant?
Uh, yeah, I noticed on, um, attachment C, page three of eight, there's some pictures of porta-potties. Are you planning to do more construction there or?
No, I think he, there's actually, so, they were finishing the wall, I think, when it was stopped and so there's-
Okay, okay, so they were working on the wall, they weren't working on the gate?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Okay. And then, um, for staff question, um, the complaint that was filed, do we know what it was for or?
Work without the benefit of a permit, that's as far as I can go with, with that, yeah.
You can't say why the complaint was?
Or who, or who complained, I can't, I can't say any of those pieces.
You can't say who, but, you know, why they might have been-
Yeah, they were questioning, the reality is they were questioning whether or not the permit had been issued for the fence and gate.
So is that they weren't, they weren't saying aesthetic issues or anything like that?
Yep.
And I'll just say there are other gates that probably were grandfathered in there.
Yeah.
That we identified in there.
Or similarly built without benefit of a permit.
Yeah, yeah, I guess those would be the non-conforming legal ones.
I would think.
Based on prior.
If, if they came in for a permit and a variance, they could become legal non-conforming. Right now, they're not legal, but the city is not chasing people about it either, right?
We are complaint-driven, that's how co-compliance works. With the, with one exception, which is landscaping. Gas-powered landscaping equipment, we, we go after them pretty extensively. No holds bar. Oh, STRs as well, sorry, that's the second one, short-term rentals.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mellett.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So just so I understand, um, on these existing properties that have the, the gates that are outside of our, our code, if, if somebody came in and complained, they would have to go through the same process?
Or take them out, which doesn't sound logical.
I'm, yeah, I'm just thinking that, you know, before 2021, wouldn't all that stuff be like grandfathered, so to speak, or no?
So if somebody, if somebody came in and asked about a fence, actually Chair Quelisi asked me about some fences and so I looked up every address that's in your packet with these existing tall fences and none of them have permits. So, um, then the question would be, were they built prior to 2021? December 2021. And so we would have to, we, there'd be a path to go down.
Right.
If somebody were to call up and, and question that.
Let me just add some context to this. The, the, the likelihood of any of these other fences or gates, um, being built between 2021 and today, pretty small. The one that we're talking about tonight is probably the only one. I will admit, there is going to be another one that if they go taller than four feet, when we start looking at the plan check, it may require a variance. And that's one that's been before this body as a review, um, several months ago. So, and that was the last vacant lot up in Persimmon Hill. The rest of it's built up, are built out.
And the majority of the properties up there have these taller fences?
Correct, correct.
Yeah. And we have had a case before us, not, not in Persimmon Hill, but in Del Oro, where we did approve a gate that was set back from the street but taller than three feet or four feet or whatever the-
Yes, there are some-
Feet at one point and then it became four feet.
There are some examples, I think the, the, the interesting thing and I think the appropriate thing for a fence and gate like this is that you want to make sure that that gate, um, is, is tucked back far enough to where when vehicles pull up, they're not in the street. And that's what this one is, is accomplishing. I can't say that's as true for all of the gates that are up there, but for this one in particular, they did build it what I would believe to be correctly.
Yeah, we have pictures of some that are not quite the same setbacks.
Not quite the same. Although there's, there's not a requirement for a distance from the property line to a gate.
No, it's not an objective standard, but from a, from a safety standpoint, you typically want to have that. So you're not having a vehicle, the, the rear end sticking out.
Would you say that the, um, uh, this gate is not unlike the other gates up there which, um, have a scale, uh, size conformance to each other?
This, this one is very similar to, to the others that are, that are up there.
To a number of them, yeah.
Quite a number of them.
See a picture, one picture.
Yeah, including, including some of the photos that are in your packet.
Wrought iron.
That's-
Materials and height.
Excuse me, the owner has his hand raised.
I'm sorry, the owner would like to speak as well? Well, please come, come ahead, sir.
Can you hear me?
Is that a muting? Oh, okay.
I, I think I unmuted.
Yep. We can hear you now, sir.
Okay, uh, first off, I want to say thank you for your kind consideration on taking a look at this. My wife and I have worked very hard on getting this property up to standard and the former landscape designer who we subsequently, he didn't retire, we fired him. So it's important that you understand that he's still working and we fired him for a number of reasons when we discovered that he wasn't, uh, doing his job to the letter of the law. And this, this, this gate variance issue was a major surprise to us. So from our standpoint of view, we felt like we were left holding the bag after we discovered a number of discrepancies by him. And I want to point that out, it's, it's extremely important. For us, you know, Ojai is a dream and we came here and have met an incredible amount of lovely, lovely people and we want to do everything to make our property, uh, as beautiful as the town of Ojai is all around. And the issue with the, with the gate has, has, has been a real, a real on in our side for us. And, and we feel that for us, you know, whatever your decision is, obviously, you're going to make a decision based upon what you feel is most appropriate and correct. For us, we just always, always felt that you can never go wrong doing the right thing. And from our standpoint of view, we just want to make our, our property fit in. We've had a number of neighbors come to us and actually take photographs of the front of our home. A couple of HOA members saying, "We thank you for what you've been, what you did to this property" because this property was an extreme disarray. So we just hope that you understand our position, what we're trying to accomplish here. We wanted to make it our, our sanctuary and our forever home. I'm 76, my wife is 70. And for us, this is the place we want to live for the rest of our lives. So I, I just wanted you to get some background on my wife and myself and our thought process on what we're trying to accomplish. And whatever decision you make, of course, we'll abide by it. But, you know, we hope you give us the benefit of the doubt because, you know, we were just taken advantage by this prior, um, architect. And this is just one of the issues, you have no idea how many there are. He ultimately settled the lawsuit with us. So, um, that's my story, I'm sticking to it and, and hopefully, you know, you'll give us a break. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, sir. Okay, having heard from the applicant, um, is there anyone here present in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Sherri, do you have anyone in the waiting room with a raised hand?
No.
Okay. Then I think we will open and then close the public hearing for public comment and come back to deliberations as a commission. Your thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I think that in general, you know, we, we put this in our code so we wouldn't become like, you know, Beverly Hills where everybody's walled off and can't see anything and they all have like 10-foot fences and- rotus, you know?
We do have some nine-foot hedges.
We do have some nine-foot hedges, yeah. So I appreciate why we have this here. I think there are certain cases specifically in Persimmon Hill where it might not be appropriate to have, you know, four-foot fences because it just wouldn't match the surrounding areas and, um, so I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I, I guess I have a question on the, the variance, that goes with the, the property, right? So if this owner was to sell, variance would continue?
The variance is for the fence and so, yeah, the, the fence can stay. It can be, um, minor repairs also without, um, without having to come back here. It runs with the land.
Right, that's what I meant, that's a question. Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. Okay, yeah, I, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable approving this.
Jamie?
Um, I'm very comfortable with it. I think this is an interesting development in the center of town and, uh, the scale of the public elements, and I'll call the gates a public element in that they're all, are mostly available from the street to look at the gate and, or, and or the opening. And there's a, there is a sense of, uh, um, context and scale to the, to the fences and, and I think they relate well to the parcel sizes in there. So I'm, I'm quite comfortable with, with all of it and, um-
And none of the gates are solid. It's not like they're blocking the view of passerby's.
Yeah, matches the consistency of the rest of the neighborhood.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm led to believe that we should approve.
Okay. My only, my only hesitation on this is that we're setting a precedent that says it's okay to build whatever you want and then come back and ask forgiveness later.
It's not the way you want it done.
It's not the way you want it done.
No, I think this-
In this case, I think it sounds like the parcel owner was led astray-
Right.
-by a contractor, um, who should have known better. But, um, that, that aside, I'm, I, I've driven by, it's, it's a nice looking, uh, structure. I think it's very much in keeping with the rest of Persimmon Hill, so.
I mean, I would think this is the kind of thing that we'd want both disclosed and done by the developer of a project like Persimmon Hill at the very beginning so that we would have us an idea of what the various gates and openings might be. So that we, we weren't being asked out of context, the, to approve these things. But together, all of these individual parcel owners have come to the same kind of conclusion in terms of the scale of the, of their fences and their-
And it feels like an appropriate scale if you drive around the neighborhood. I don't know that we need different rules for different parts of the city. That gets a little messy. But, uh, the project itself looks fine to me, so. Uh, I did have, uh, one correction to the resolution which Maura knows about already. And that is, this is attachment A, page one, the fifth recital. And page two, the second recital, says January 17th. I think that may be when this was originally scheduled. But that should be changed to January 3rd. And otherwise, I'm ready to go.
Right, and those corrections will be made before your signature.
Very good. Okay, anything else, last thoughts? No? Then we need a motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the, the DRP and the, and the variance.
I'll second these motions. Very good, all right, discussion. Sherri, please call roll on item two.
Bennett?
Yes.
Trent?
Yep.
Quelisi.
Yes. All right. Go, go, continue doing your good work.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item three. Future agenda items. Looks like a full house two weeks from now. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Maura.
We, hey, look, we are not short on work and you're seeing here now we have some current projects as well as, uh, advanced, um, planning projects that are coming online. So we are not short of work by any stretch of the imagination and, but I'm not, I'm, in no, in no way, shape or form are we, um, creating a logjam here. We're just, we're moving projects along as they come forward, so, and are ready to process. There are other projects that aren't noted here that I have a feeling and strong sense that they'll be ready, uh, in February, either the first or second meeting. But we're finalizing stuff right now and I don't want to put them on the, either pending or on here, either with a question mark or otherwise. But you can expect that the next two meetings will be full meetings. So, actually at one point we were looking at pushing this to the 17th of this month, this, this item you just heard right now, but it was ready to go, so. We had a quorum for, for meeting tonight, so we-
Four cases on the 17th would have been a really full night.
Would have been, it would have been- Would have been. It would have been. So three's three's uh much more palatable. There could potentially be a fourth on the seventeenth. We'll see how that plays out in the next couple of days, but um, yeah.
Okay.
Awesome.
Question to staff, is there the um review um of the Rancho Inn? Is that what triggered the Hummingbird and the um the Capri?
Capri Hotel? Yeah, they're all under the same owner. So, yeah, one one, we we're getting a annual report.
All right.
You'll be receiving an annual report. And then there are proposals for those other two.
Oh, so they're looking to expand?
Yep. That's as far as I can go.
Yeah, do similar things like periodic events, you mean?
Um, similar, yes. Yeah, so they're on the edge of the city, obviously.
And can I ask, i- is one oh seven South Signal the backside of the movie theater?
Yes, it's that it's that similarly colored and structured building there that's directly behind the theater.
Okay. Stucco kind of Spanish style. Yeah.
Okay.
We had a uh concept review on that? That that building with-
Might have been before my time. It was it would have been a few years back, no?
It seems recently because it involved outdoor an outdoor dining facility.
There was a DE that was done.
There was a DE, that's what it was. Okay.
Um and I I noticed that the uh the bowling alley had been pulled. They still working on it?
We're working on it, but it's far from moving forward now. Yeah, there's been some changes.
That's a tall hill to climb on that property.
Looking at things differently right now. I thought we were at the finish line, but
Yeah, I thought we were getting close.
They're they're changing the uh the spread. It's not penciling out like they had uh thought, so. Thought we had them at the finish line to get forward to this to this body, but
The the annual review, I rec- I recall when we approved the the CUP for Rancho, that we specified an annual review, but I don't remember for what period of time. Is this-
There is no end, but I will be talking about that
Okay.
extensively.
I think the big concern was noise.
Yep.
Well, sure. Uh we heard we heard the the concerns of the neighbors the last time around. But we'll we'll go through the performance over the last year and
Yep.
whether or not there've been any complaints and
Yep, that'll all be spelled out in the staff report.
Okay, very good.
I think parking was an issue too.
Uh, parking was not an issue. That was addressed through the CUP.
Yeah, but wasn't that part of the conditional?
We had uh we had three
Right.
Three off-site parking.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Four.
Correct.
Four?
Four.
Oh, okay.
Yep. There was one that they snuck in at the eleventh hour, literally at the day of the meeting. Obviously, we knew about it, but they had requested it and then
Okay, well-
We obliged.
We'll discuss it on that day.
This body obliged, so.
All right, any other questions?
No, I'm okay, I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, so we're not canceling any meetings anytime soon.
All right, very good. Uh directors, report. Anything else you want to add?
I do have a couple of pieces that I wanted to make this body aware of, because I think you'll see some new faces in the coming weeks. We have um hired two new planning staff members.
Wow.
One just started this week. Her name is Sarah Camilli. Um and she's fresh out of college. She brought her in as a planning aide. So you'll see her in future meetings, because she has items that are going to be on the agenda soon. Um probably in February. The second um planning aide that we've brought on-
I didn't see any unfamiliar initials here, so.
Not yet. I know, I just saw that. I was like, hmm, that's been reassigned. There's things that have been reassigned, but obviously didn't, we didn't catch those for this um agenda. Second hire that we've got that we're bringing on on Monday, so she starts on Monday, is Sarah Marshall. And she has a few years of experience. Um she's coming out of uh Santa Barbara County. So we've snagged her-
Sarah one and Sarah two?
Two Saras.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
That won't get confusing at all.
Not at all. I think we're gonna be just fine. No, but we're super excited, staff, super excited and, you know, and talking with both of them. Just so this body's aware, we had forty applicants that came in um for these these two positions and narrowed it down. And these are the two that-
Nice to have that many choices.
Yeah.
It is. I was pleasantly surprised to have a pool to choose from, so.
Good stuff.
Quality problem, yeah.
That was a good problem to have. I had talked to this body in months previous where I was trying to bring somebody on and it just, we weren't getting a lot of applicants. So, it's encouraging to see more.
One of them just disappeared, so.
That is true.
Now, is is uh is one of them gonna focus on advanced planning?
Yep.
Oh, good.
One is gonna be squarely focused on advanced planning. Yep.
Excellent.
But both of them, you'll see, working on advanced and current. But one in particular is gonna be focused on advanced. So you'll see her a lot here. So, it's exciting times.
Looking forward to getting getting claws back into Title X.
Title X is on on the agenda in terms of focusing on some specific pieces. We got some direction from council when we've took forward uh Title X, so uh we'll focus on some of those in the coming-
They did approve the two hundred or so changes that we
Two hundred and eighty-nine, yes.
That's a lot of work.
Hundreds of hours spent, yes.
But there's
During COVID.
There's some more, yeah, there's some more serious-
We were virtual for a lot of that, too, yeah.
More serious stuff or more substantive stuff yet to come.
It's the term that I like to use. It's a deeper dive into some of this stuff, which is necessary, so.
Okay.
But that's it for in terms of director's report. That's that's all I have to report.
Okay. Anything from commissioners?
No, nothing. Um, oh, a question. I know that we had our um our housing subcommittee, and you had mentioned that we were gonna set up some time for that. I was just curious if that's been penciled in for January?
Absolutely. One of those Saras is being assigned to that.
Right, good stuff.
Okay.
And obviously, I'll be helping along with that as well. But yes, getting some getting some work done and some progress on that to bring forward to the full body and beyond.
Are we doing anything about employing um somebody in code compliance?
Yes, we have a co-compliance officer. We have a new co-compliance officer that started maybe a month ago. So we transitioned with the co-compliance officer, but yes.
Full-time or is it shared?
Uh, they work basically thirty hours, forty hours a week, yeah.
In Ojai?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wow.
Oh, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, we have, we're we're contracting through a firm referred to as well, Dan, so.
So all those complaints you've been throwing at him, he now has someplace to throw them, isn't he?
Well, I was doing it before, but I'm doing it a lot less now uh in terms of of what he's been doing, so.
That's one less full-time job that you have.
Well, I am a director that wears many hats, and I'm a working director, so.
I mentioned ten ten West Ojai Avenue earlier, and you, I think, deferred the discussion to now.
So what was your question on ten ten West Ojai?
Just whether there was anything, whether there was any news there, since I had heard about additional machinations, if you will, um in my position as a member of the sanitary district board.
Ah, so in terms of units or applications that have come in?
Units or, yeah, or requests to do something different with the property. It's currently uh single-family residence in a non-residential zone. And I guess it could stay like that indefinitely. But if there's additional development going on, that would involve both the city and the sanitary district.
No new applications have been received for that property.
Okay.
Yeah. We did have an application that's that was in, but since it has expired, so.
Oh, okay.
The the use that went forward before this body several months ago was for single family, in terms of re-establishing that. Because it is, looking at it from the street, it looks like a single-family home. So.
That's all you can see from from the street, yeah.
Yeah.
Ten ten West Ojai Avenue?
It's on the north side of Ojai.
El Paso and and the office building and gas station there on the corner of Del Marte.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
Okay. Here from our city council liaison, welcome.
We have a new one.
This is the first time you've done this one, I think.
Yeah, we're in a new rotation, so I'm your liaison for the next quarter.
You you, this was an easy one tonight.
Yeah.
And you've been a planning commissioner before, so you know this stuff.
And I've sat through some city council meetings.
Just a few.
Yes.
Yeah.
Some very exciting ones.
Long nights are part of the equation.
I think we broke a record today. This is one of our earliest ones.
That sure is.
This is nice.
But we've also been here past eleven, so.
Yeah, I'm sure. I you know, just my view about being liaison is that I'm, you know, like children, I should be seen and not necessarily heard. I'm here to watch. I'm not gonna jump into your deliberations. And I don't think city council members should. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't be talking outside of the meetings, but I expect you guys to run your meeting and rely upon your very capable staff to give you advice. And um
And our city attorney.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alex is here with us virtually tonight.
He had a big New Year's.
Yeah. I'll say I was kind of debated about commenting on the one agenda item you had, but I was happy to hear that each of you have concern that the planning commission not be the place where you get
Forgiveness?
You get uh, you know, a permission not to follow the rules.
Yeah.
Uh, my, you know, fantasies since serving for, you know, a couple of years on planning is that people would um go to the ordinances to see what they can and cannot do and design their project accordingly.
I would think you'd depend on your contractor to know all that stuff ahead of time, yeah.
And and I, in addition to that issue on that, I think the fact that the, you know, this is something that we should probably be looking at, because I think I I think the proper approach is not to not to grant variances, it's to see when the rules are out of step with reality. We need to look at amending the rules. And there were two things on that project that I thought were important and maybe we need to look at. One is, when you're twenty-five feet away from your property line, it's really not the same thing as putting a gate up, you know, to your driveway.
At the side, at the sidewalk, yeah.
And and also the fact that it was a um you know, wrought iron gate so that you can see through it. Yeah, I know the concern um is that you don't create these, you know, physical barriers that make it not neighborly.
Visual barriers, yeah.
Concept. So um, you know, we should probably look at our stand on gates in terms of uh what, you know, the rules that apply maybe close to the property line versus the rules that apply away and and maybe also look at our our view on maybe it's already in the ordinances in terms of the the ability to see through the gate.
Oh, transparency?
Yeah.
The gates, as well as a fence, are are kind of one and the same. They hold the same weight. There isn't a provision in the code that separates how we address gates. Uh, to your point, though, uh in twenty twenty-one, when we were we were grappling with this, it was kind of an interesting conversation. Because it was it was threaded from issues from past single-family residences that had used the standard to their advantage, meaning they had found a per- a perceivable loophole. Uh, and to button that up was what we did in twenty twenty-one. And even some of that stuff was done before then. But to really kind of button everything up in twenty twenty-one. Pulling some of that back in terms of the pieces that you're talking about is is certainly something that can be discussed.
And and could we carve out just like based on the very low-density land use, like just for that specific land?
There are, there are other places in the code where the rules are different for different zoning areas.
Yeah, if it was to be tied, it would, it should be tied to zoning.
That's blanket across that four foot, right?
It is. It's citywide. Yeah, it's not, it's not earmarked for single-family or or any specific particular zone, so.
You know, there there are some places where, you know, you can go drive down a short street and you see, you know, and these are all places out of variance, but it's it's all at least six-foot-tall fences and solid gates.
Conforming, yeah.
So you're you're like, you know, driving through a canyon with no in a, so, you know, in a residential neighborhood. So I, that's the part we want to avoid and um so the only other thing I was gonna talk about real quickly is that, uh, because there was a question earlier, and I was planning to talk about this anyways, but the terms of the vacant seat, I have talked regularly with both Matt and Wes. And my understanding is that we have a green light, and the new process is that Chair Quilisi and I, it's it's my rotation, that's why I've been involved, to be, you know, selecting um along with the mayor. And so, you know, my understanding is there are plans to conduct interviews. And it's just a matter of scheduling them. And uh hopefully, we'll go forward with that fairly soon.
Great.
So, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Last, last go-round. Anything left? All right? Then in the absence of any other business for the commission at six forty-eight? Remember adjourn.